Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. The mayor is going to join us via Zoom. And I'm gonna control the meeting tonight, so.
Mayor Prosser Moore?
Here.
Compton person Dean?
Here.
Goodweiler?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Stulman?
Here.
Dean?
Yes.
And Mayor Loughlin?
Yeah, I'm here on Zoom.
You're muted.
Is that?
Hello?
Yeah, I'm here. God dang it.
It's here.
We have no guest speakers. Public comment? Anybody for a public comment? Out there in TV land, anybody for a public comment? Alrighty. F approve agenda consent agenda. Number one, a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the city council meeting March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Two, motion to accept the notice of retirement date for Gordon Edgar, the finance director. Number three, motion to appoint members to an establish animal control appeals board. Number four, motion to approve claims report. Need a motion. Come on. Nick, second. Discussion. No discussion. Call roll.
Compton person Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
All right, public hearing non-consent agenda. Number one, resolution nineteen ninety, accepting the seal coat unit pricing from L N L Pelling or Shamrock Company. I need a motion. Sexton, second. Who opened? Discussion. Matt, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. So all of this would do was would give us prices we would use for any seal coat work we are gonna do. And then we, I guess, have the ability to choose one or the other based off availability and the size of the project, because I haven't done the math yet to see if that that charge that they would give us off the top at Shamrock, there's probably a tipping point where that if it's too small, it wouldn't be much of a difference between Pelling. So anyway, we're just hoping to have both of them approved unless you guys just want to stick to one or the other. And that'd give us the ability to use both of them if we needed to.
Okay.
I did, I did reach out to some other companies and basically there's not very many people that do it in this area. There's other ones that do it, but they they kind of stick to certain areas and these are the two that did it here.
I kind of like the idea of having two to choose from.
Yeah.
So do you, do you have any idea how, how much we're looking at quantity wise?
Um, just from looking at what I've seen so far this spring, I wouldn't think we'd be twenty-five to thirty thousand at the most. The roads aren't terrible. There's that chunk north of Greenview. We'll redo that whole street. And then there's some patching with some, some boils in a couple spots, but other than that, they're in pretty decent shape.
So Matt, do we pick up our own, do we get our own cold patch to do some repairs sometimes?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so that's a no brainer then, because Shamrock is seventy-five dollars a ton cheaper. And they wouldn't charge us a mobilization fee if we're going to pick up our own cold patch, would they?
Well, and they probably actually get that cold patch from Pelling. We go get our own cold patch and it's ninety, it's ninety-five dollars a ton for us to go pick it up.
Okay.
That hundred and seventy-five is for them to provide it and place it. Yeah.
Okay.
I guess my question would be is Shamrock's got a mobilization price on there and Pelling doesn't, so I guess the question is if we don't have a lot of of quantity, does that, does it still pencil out that Shamrock's that much cheaper than L N L Pelling?
Yeah, that I'm not, I hadn't actually figured that up. I was gonna, I was gonna see how much quantity it would actually take to get to that point. That's why we just put them both on and figured we could, we could have them both come out, measure stuff up and see where they, where they came out on price.
What's mobilization?
Just bring their equipment out here.
Oh, bringing their equipment and people out. Assuming that's right, every time you mobilize them.
I was gonna say, is that a one-time mobilization, or is it they have to come out two or three times and they charge us every time they come out?
I think it's per project, so if we had them come out and bring their equipment out in the spring, we'd pay that. If they left and we had them come back, but we don't, normally they come in, they do everything they're gonna do in a couple days and they're gone. Which would be one mobilization.
Yeah. Do you think there's a possibility that L N L Pelling will lower their price?
Possibly. I gave them a call. I'm waiting for a call back. I'll try calling them again and see. They're, they're gonna be coming around sometime in the near future, I'm sure, to get, get some measurements and just see where we're at.
As far as I'm concerned, it looks like we have both of them come out and price out the same thing, and whichever one comes in the cheapest price, that's the one we go with.
Yeah. I mean, we have never used Shamrock, but I haven't heard anything bad about them either, so.
I mean, I don't know. I like the flexibility. I don't understand why accepting both of these matters one way or the other. And he's the cheapest at the end of the day, anyway. I mean, the one thing about Pelling is because they don't charge a mobilization fee, they let the project stack up before they come out. They're not gonna come out and do something if there's an emergency or something like that, you know? So at the end of the day, Shamrock, that might be a good option to have if, you know, a chunk of street blows up and we gotta get it, get it done on Main Street, you know, twenty-two hundred bucks to get it done right away versus waiting two months for Pelling to get us squeezed in, you know, might be worth it.
Yeah, Pelling does typically, they plan their stuff out like for the whole year. They put you on a schedule and that's when you get it. And if you change it, you might get pushed back. That's, we've changed it before in the spring and got pushed back four and five months. Just because once they schedule it, there's no getting back, yeah. So.
Do you know, is Shamrock busy like that? If we were to schedule something and then you push the way back?
That I'm not sure. I'd have to, I'd have to talk with them more about it. They acted like they're pretty open to just, you know, setting something up and coming out. Some of the guys like that, that aren't, like Pelling's huge. They do, obviously, you know, but they do a lot, so their stuff's scheduled way out. I think Shamrock is kind of like how Hanson works with asphalt. They'll, they have a smaller window that you have to hit, or, you know, I don't think they're scheduled out six months or whatever. They're probably scheduled out smaller time, so they'd probably be more willing to come out.
It just seems like we do it really late in the year. Traveling. In my opinion, doesn't get gotten in, but we're at Pelling's mercy, too, you know?
Yeah, that, the problem is if I, we've pulled them off in the spring because of a project or something else that was going on, and then we get pushed back, and once we do that, they put us at the end of the season, which, no, you're right. If you do it right at the end of the year, it doesn't hold up as good as earlier in the year.
Any other discussion? Call roll.
Compton person Sexton?
Okay, hold on.
So what, what are we voting on here?
Either or.
Yeah.
Either or, so. Calling out which one we want?
The resolution would, would accept both.
That's, yeah, that's what I meant by either or.
Yeah, I put, I put a space in there. If you only wanted one, then we would just write in the one you wanted, but the intent is to have both of them.
Okay.
Anything else? Call roll.
Compton person Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yeah.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
All right. Number two, resolution nineteen ninety-one, establishing a new fund for the water quality improvement sponsor project program. I need a motion. Nick, second. Dean? Discussion.
This is just to set up a fund?
Yes. Well, we actually got a bill from B and K, so I need to pay them, so.
Yeah, it's making a line item for that.
Yeah. We'll go into a little bit of a deficit until we get our funding from the other project, but.
Have we done, have we just designated any projects yet, or we're just, we're still?
No.
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
And I, I should say, I, I put in the background all the information to the sponsor program in general, just so you, you would know, but this is really related to the twenty, not to exceed the twenty thousand dollars for the application process. And if you recall, we'll have, I think there was at least a, a public meeting, maybe two, and the application is due to be submitted in September. So we did get a bill in and we realized we need to set that fund up so that we can pay V and K. And we anticipate that it's going to be twenty thousand dollars or less before we're all said and done with getting that application in. Once we get the application, which we feel comfortable about, then that's what triggers the two percent of the overall wastewater treatment project, which we believe will be around seven hundred thousand dollars, give or take.
Hey, Roger, did we ever get where you can talk?
Say that again?
Okay, there you go. We, we just wanted to know if you were on so you could talk if you wanted.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there any other discussion? Call roll.
Compton person Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Stulman?
Yes.
All right. Number three, resolution nineteen ninety-two. It's a resolution approving twenty-eighty agreement between the city of West Branch, Iowa and the Board of Trustees of Cass, Gower, Graham, Iowa, Scott, and Springdale Townships for the purpose of fire protection and aid and assistance for other emergencies or disasters relating to life and property or hazardous materials. Need a motion. Sexton, second. Goodweiler. Discussion. This is just, we do this every year, don't we?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Call roll.
Compton person Sexton?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes. All right. Number four, resolution nineteen ninety-three. This is a resolution approving a general agreement between the United States Department of Interior National Park Service and the city of West Branch regarding law enforcement assistance. Need a motion. Jody, second. Tom. Discussion. I don't know. I think we're changing it a little bit. Every five years, yeah.
It's five years, yeah.
Discussion.
Pete Hannah, you have anything?
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Nope, just the standard agreement.
Call roll.
Compton person Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Number five, this is a resolution approving a radio frequency, frequency use agreement between the city of West Branch and the Herbert Hoover National Historic Site. I need a motion. Tom, a second. Nick. Discussion. Alrighty. Call roll.
Compton person Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Number six, resolution nineteen ninety-five. This is a resolution approving the general agreement between the United States Department of Interior National Park Service and the West Branch Fire Rescue Department, city of West Branch, Iowa. Need a motion. Nick, second. Jerry, discussion. You okay with it? Kevin? Any more discussion? Call roll.
Compton person Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
All right, number seven, resolution nineteen ninety-six. This is a resolution approving and accepting certain municipal improvements constructed in the Meadows subdivision, part four B, West Branch, Iowa. I need a motion. Jerry, second. Nick, discussion.
This is, this is the final improvement, improvement, right?
I gotta get through all this government crap first, so I can see what it is.
Pete knows every single one of those pages by heart, no, yeah. What did they have to, what were the final things they had to do to get this final approval? Light?
Jerry, this is Dave Scheckinger. There were just a few things left to do. There's a hydrant that has to be lowered very slightly. It's a minor adjustment. Place some riprap at some Flirldan sections. Provide the aprons for those sections to Matt at the Public Works Building. There were some dead end signs that need to be installed. And then we also had to put up the street name signs.
Have they all been completed?
They're working on that and should have it done shortly. And Matt, I believe the city usually provides those street name signs. They're consistent. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Dave, Roger here. Is, on the west end of Cedar Johnson Road, there's a puddle of water in the ditch that's been there all summer long or all winter long. Is, can that be leveled out? And it's where the water main got hooked up, I think, on the west side of Cedar Johnson Road, across the road from this development?
I wish it could. Ditch just needs to be shaped to get that to flow, Roger?
Yeah, that's all it needs.
Okay.
So it's, it's real minor, but that puddle of water's gonna sit there all summer long.
Okay, I can talk to Bruce about that.
Is it? Is it a customary to accept municipal improvements when there's still a punch list?
We had an escrow before and we had approved the final plat, so these things are in the works. I didn't go out and check today. All American was actively working on getting the signs put up. And Lynch had indicated he was going to have the hydrant lowered and the items would be complete. I, I didn't have a chance to go out today. I was out late last week, but to look together. But given the people that are involved, I don't have any issue with going ahead and getting this from a time standpoint.
Okay, though. Any other discussion?
Do we have a timeline on the sidewalks?
Sidewalks are done when the houses are, they have three years in the final five to get them all in. This one got two back. But they, so basically you don't put them in until the house is being built, so they don't get wrecked, you know? That's how we do it in all the stuff.
So does the developer do that or the homeowner?
Either, I mean, usually it's, I'm the developer to do it and they transfer it through their bike a lot. So the home builder usually doesn't. Part of the year is to get back and see if you get a sidewalk, at least in big time.
But if it goes two or three years.
So like, there's a couple, like, what was it, lynchings we just?
Yeah, and lynchings, lynchings, they, they're subdivision agreements at three years, so I just sent letters to three of the property owners that that have flash now, so they have to put in sidewalks to complete that subdivision. It'll be the same with this one, but typically it's done with the property when it's built and it is a requirement for when proposing for us to set up sidewalk agreements. We won't do the sidewalk for these unless the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Call roll.
Compton person Sexton?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
All right, number eight, discussion item establishing the downtown east redevelopment site, former Crowell Ready Mix site as a P U D planned unit development zoning designation. I'm gonna start the discussion with, I thought we already did this.
No, we never did formally rezone that property. And what's, what started this is West Branch Roofing wants to build a new building. They want to tear down the Quonset hut and build a brand new building, which they really need. However, there are setbacks of the current zoning with a twenty-five foot rear yard and front yard. They can build like a twelve foot wide building. Anyway, so in this P and Z meeting last couple weeks ago, we concluded that we should just rezone West Branch Roofing property, the Haring property, the grain elevators, the Crowell site, maybe drag, get in the Miller building, all into a P U D and maybe go even farther and get the Bennett properties, if they're willing, and just rezone the whole, I don't know, six acres into a P U D. And that's what the point of the discussion is tonight. The city would drive it. It would be our rezoning. We would do all the notifications. I guess, what are your guys' thoughts? Basically, this is instigated to help out West Branch Roofing, so they can, they have room to build a building. We can review their site and they don't have to follow the setback protocols of a industrial or RB two or RB whatever zoning. And we've always, we're gonna rezone this into a P U D for the Crowell site also. I don't know. What are your guys' thoughts?
So you're telling, well, you're, what you're telling us, Roger, is that's the, that's the pros of us doing a P P U D. So what would the cons be?
Um. Well, the only one I can think of is we're rushed to, West Branch Roofing would build a building. I don't know what type of building they're talking about. It would have to meet and I don't know what code is required with, with setbacks that might be closer than an industrial building or a building with storage of roofing materials that might, you know, be a hazard to neighbors, I suppose, if you want to view it. That's the only con I can think of. Most buildings like that have to be, it would be the, the, the type of construction would have to be proper to allow for, for whatever they're storing and the type of work that they do and occupancy load. I, I don't think that, I haven't called Bob Herring yet, but I think their taxes, if he balks about increased taxes, I believe, since it doesn't change the use of the grain elevators from an egg standpoint, they remain as an egg tax, which is pretty cheap for him.
I think, I think one of the things we definitely need to do is get ahold of Herring again and see, see what his. I went to the P and Z meeting with Roger last Tuesday when they had their meeting and and one of the things that West Branch Roofing has concerns with is Rob Herring does not, or Bob Herring does not want to sell, there's a, there's a building behind West Branch Roofing's building right now that they actually rent from Bob Herring. They would like to buy that chunk from Bob Herring, so they'd have more room for their building. Bob doesn't want to sell it because he doesn't know what city is gonna allow in that whole area. So he's kind of holding out to find out what the city's gonna do, so he's kind of holding them almost hostage in a way, I guess. So I think, I think we really need to get with Bob and just kind of see where he's at again. Maybe we talked to him probably a couple of years ago and I know he didn't put any grain in there this year.
Do you think he's holding on to that, hoping that we decide that we're just gonna make him go away? And then, and then he gets to gets to sell it for top dollar and skip.
At one time, this was part of his farming program, because he rented ground down, down in this area and he stored the grain. And that, that rental ground's gone away and he's back up towards the mechanics. And it's a, it's a facility which most farmers don't get the opportunity. He has natural gas for drying many of his grain, but the last time we talked to him, he was gonna remove the dryer rather, which I think is still there. But I'm pretty sure he didn't put any grain in there this year. I don't think he's holding out, because when we talked to him before, he doesn't want to be there. There's a development goes in there, new housing, residential, he doesn't want to be there. He knows that if he's there, he brings grain in there, people are living all around him, there's gonna, there's gonna be issues. He doesn't want that. He wants to get, get out of there, but he doesn't want to give it away either, so.
He's got a commodity. He does, he can't give it away. He won't do that, and I don't blame him. His, his operation's moving north. It's just kind of an unfortunate remnant that.
But he may be more negotiable now than he was a couple of years ago.
He's been willing to work with us. He's, he's said he's been willing to work with us.
I don't think, nobody's been able to determine where the easement for him to get in and out of there is either.
Just that there is one that exists.
There's one that exists, but nobody knows how he can get in there and out. I mean, he's always going, you know, gone south and went out that way, but maybe the easement is actually taking him to the west and around the building. Nobody knows. Nobody knows if he's even got an easement. So it's kind of a whole mess, actually a mess, really. It's hard to get a developer to come in there and design something when there's some kind of an easement in there that nobody knows where it is.
Well, it's gotta be in writing somewhere, doesn't it?
You would think.
So who, who's on the hook to figure that out?
Everybody who would buy that property has to show that they're gonna be access to it at some point. I don't know when he bought it, but it's been a few years. Yeah. You're gonna have to find, I mean, gas tracker, when you've got the crow, like that, I mean, the whole, everything down there, they're completely messed up. Of a, you know, title situation. I mean, easement's gone all over the place in there, so.
Yeah, the Miller property is even messed up.
Yeah.
And he's land, he's virtually a landlord.
That's why he's almost, I mean, he's probably gonna need a buyer's description anyway, that he's been using it for ten years.
Yeah. Well, at one time it would have been all, you know, all one property.
Yeah.
He's owned egg now. He's owned ag now, Roger?
I thought the grain bins were zoned ag, but maybe they're, I thought they were zoned ag. Just the elevators.
They aren't zoned ag and he isn't using them. That's a problem. He loses, he loses use if he was a non-conformist, but if he's zoned ag, it would be a problem. But he's owned industrial, that would be a problem.
I think it is. I think it is ag too.
Well, anyway, I want to get this discussion started and, um, I, we need to sit down with Bob and get his thoughts and and West Branch Roofing's in no huge hurry. But it's just one of these things that's gonna drag on and on if we don't do something and they're not gonna get a new building, which they really want. They want to stay in town. I, I feel like we owe it to West Branch Roofing to, to get something done to, to keep them here and keep them happy.
Been here a long time.
So I would suggest that the council people get a hold of Redmond and, because there's, the P U D that we have adopted is like a, its own mini book. And so you probably should make yourself familiar with that before we trot down this road.
Yeah, just in, in general, um, planned unit development, the concept behind that is that sometimes there's requirements of traditional zoning that might make a positive development, might be a hindrance to a positive development. So the planned unit development is a way that policymakers can sit down and weigh the costs and benefits of positive measures, consider things like design, which isn't really clarified in our current zoning uh, designations and come up with an overall, um, better project without creating some of the barriers that get in the way for developers. So I would say it's, it's positive. Typically, the way I see it, and I haven't talked to Kevin, so Kevin could say I'm wrong on this, but it's typically a overlay, uh, which doesn't negate the, the, the base, um, zoning. Um, but you know, that I'm not a hundred percent clear on, but typically that's how it's used. And I think if there's any challenge, just because this is new, um, trying to make sure that there's some uniformity with the ultimate design and development, which we don't have a developer, uh, there yet. And, and what the, uh, roofing company is trying to do, we could approve it and it might look like a Swiss, uh, Alps building and, and we might have something that looks like a farm red, uh, red farm building or something. And it, it may not, it may not, you know, jive with each other. So it would probably be move us to work with a design that we think is pretty conformative because we don't know what, what the developer is going to want to do and what that design is going to ultimately look like. So something that can be easily, um, you know, connected would be something that I would say we would, would do as if we were working moving forward with the roofing company. Something that would be easily adaptable to something else would be the only potential challenge I would see.
Other thing I'd say is by doing the whole site and putting the rules on there, you're not, we have uses, we have, obviously we have different uses over there that shouldn't be continued. We're not gonna allow them to get bigger. We're not gonna allow them, you know, so you go to Corvo, you know, you had all that industrial area. We put one over the whole thing. So industrial people couldn't come in there, start building or making their things bigger. We shouldn't be making, or uses over there that need to go, I mean, we're not pushing them out, but you just can't let them go on and get bigger, you know, they need to follow some of the rules. This way you have them, you know, you start to, you know, you know, some of those items that you, uh, they can be, you know, storing stuff there. You're just getting, getting towards trying to get them more uniform development for the whole thing instead of the hodgepodge.
But in a roundabout way, Kevin, that's exactly what we're doing by doing the P U D because right now they really can't do much more with what they're doing. So we're gonna change the rules so we can.
The rules are gonna be, they can't continue what they're doing right now. Like, you know, the grain bin or the grain bins, those are, I mean, that's not gonna be used as allowed in the P U D. I mean, they can continue to be there right now. Until they, but it's not something they can expand. It's not, in an ag zoning, he can come in here and do some, you know, he could do something like standard right now. Do the overlay district. You're not saying you have to leave, but you're saying you're a non-conforming user. You can't make it bigger, you know, you're not gonna make that, you know, everybody knows the, and even the owner knows that that's not a good place for that type of, you know, it's not a good place for that type of business because it's gonna be surrounded by urban development and he didn't even know that, but you know, I think that's part of the reason for doing something to start, you know, pushing in certain direction. I mean,
Don't we end up with control of?
We do. And you have to, so like at West Branch Roofing, right now, under a traditional zoning, you wouldn't have control of the design. Well, if we're gonna give them something, the P U D's supposed to say, okay, I'm gonna give you something not, you're not gonna have to follow the traditional setbacks. In exchange, you're gonna have to give us something that we want, you know, have control of the, have control of what the buildings look like or something like that. We have, so our zoning code, we don't have control of, you know, design standards for regular, but under P U D, in exchange for for you setbacks, you're giving us something, you know, we, we obviously, that's gonna, that's on a brand new street. We want it to look, we want it to look decent, you know? I mean, right now, and they know, everything does, and those buildings are old and need to go. So I mean, I think it's a win for everybody. Plus we can, we can sort of get the design or layout that we want to, uh, to, uh, that. So, you know, somebody can come in here, put a whole number that, you know, that under his own, you know, tell them they can't do that. I'm not saying we're putting up great buildings. I'm just saying you have some control over how they designed it and stuff like that.
Well, I guess the, we spent a lot of time doing this P U D thing and it was literally all done for specifically just a couple of sites. And this was one of the sites that we were developing the P U D for, so.
And then they have to bring a site plan back that, you know, you have control over how that looks too. I mean, you know, if it was somebody down in the actual Kroll site or one of the other sites, you still have control over that too, so.
Kevin, as a point of clarification, that area is zoned as I two on the current zoning map?
Okay, so in theory, if the ag use has been discontinued for a certain number of months, that may not be a legal use at this point. Am I, would I read that correct, Dave?
I believe so. And then I, there's a portion of that up by that Bennett radio that looks like it might be R three. It's between Fourth Street and the old railroad, um, right away.
The other thing that brings it to effect is you can all have, so if you have, these are all non-conforming uses that are grandfathered in. But if they're not, if they abandon them and don't use them for a certain amount of time, they lose that, they lose that use. So I mean, that's another reason to talk to the property owners and say, you know, it's sort of the same thing with the, uh, restaurant, the old, uh, restaurant down there. About the, uh, having, I think two or six, I had to look at two or six months or a year non-use of a non-conform use means you abandoned that use and you have to follow the zoning code, isn't it?
So would the grain site follow one of those same?
Yes. So grain site, I assume, um, the zoning code for me would, ag would be a, but industrial, I don't think industrial would allow grain sites. I'd have to look at the, I'd have to look at the, uh, specific uses of the industrial.
Do we really feel like telling Herring you can't use that building?
No, no, that's.
You know, those grain bins like that anymore.
No, what I'm saying though is, you know, by doing this, you know, at least talking to him and saying, hey, you got some issues here too.
Yeah, right.
But I'm not, I'm not trying to push anybody out using those, that's.
Or force them to use them. I mean, you know, they're better than sitting there not being used than they are.
If Bennett's are zoned R three, they've abandoned that use too and it, it should be, should be knocked down.
Yeah, I mean, shit can say that about chassis engineering too.
I've got Days Inn in Corvo at Burn and they're getting a setback. They're done. They have to knock that thing down. Same.
chassis engineering is called nerd storage, so you can use it as storage.
So, but, but I mean, I mean, that's something to talk to the property owners about is if you're not using your, you know, same with the building on the corner, I don't know what that exactly is being used as a storage.
It's, yeah.
So.
All right, any more discussion?
One other question, Kevin. If we're going to rezone this or put an, a P U D overlay on it, is I two the correct underlying zoning district for that? Or is there something else that we'd prefer to do and do all this at the same time?
Well, I think we gotta, we, what we gotta do is do a P U D and then say, what are the, uh, list of uses that would be allowed in certain, in certain areas. So obviously if I, the roofing company would say it could be industrial, but we're not gonna, industrial's not gonna be down part of the south. Does, yeah, I think the same day. We gotta, we gotta think about how, you know.
Not really an area we want to have industrial in anymore anyway.
No.
Yeah.
Well, but West Branch Roofing, is that commercial or industrial? It's like, it's just a, you know, I guess that's another question I'd have to, depending on what they're doing. Cause their office is across the street, right?
Right. And they want to, they want to bring that across into the new building and put it in the new building.
So the office, you know, it could be commercial slash industrial.
They own across the river.
On the creek, yeah.
That's a, in the floodway though, so you know, watch that.
I was only asking because do they want to stay there for sure?
They want to own all the ground that they still own. They don't want to, they don't want any land swap. They don't.
Okay, that was gonna be my question. Could we do the whole?
We discussed that with them and as long as they're still grandfathered in and that building doesn't wash away that they want to keep that.
They can't add onto that building now.
No, I was just thinking the land swap thing because if you get it and then, you know, almost have the whole block to block besides the grain bins.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then. Well, the next thing I want to do, we need to schedule, schedule a meeting with Harrings, Bennetts and, uh, Miller and
Yeah.
I'll get a couple of council people to sit in on those and that's what we gotta do next.
I mean, the city can do it themselves, but we'd give them notice of, we don't want the notice from the newspaper or the mail saying, oh, I'm gonna resent your property, I'm talking to them. So that's a problem. So.
All right.
So we have to redo the P U D?
No, we're starting to change that.
It was never, it was never moved.
Yeah.
Rezoning.
So we know what direction we want to go, Roger?
Yeah.
All right. We're gonna move on. Number nine, discussion item, city goals and projects. So I brought this forward and I guess my, uh, reasoning for it was I thought some of these projects are just moving a little slower than I'd like them to move. So my idea was, is that we're, we, we make these goals, but we don't really put any timelines or expectations on it. And I think that maybe we need to start doing that. Like the downstream flood mitigation that we've been talking about for four years. You know, a year ago, we were gonna do eminent domain with the gas kills. And here we are, a year later, we still have no, no, no kind of agreement with them whatsoever. And we, we've just wasted a year, year of time that we've had our town in, you know, at risk of flooding again and we haven't done anything. So my idea was is the things that we know we're gonna do, let's go so far as to say downstream flood mitigation. We'd like to have a shovel in the ground and that project started by April first of twenty twenty-two. There, there's your timeline. Make it happen. You know, so, so now, now we've got a goal, we're, we're working towards something and we know this is when it's gonna happen. And so, you know, if, if I need to put a shovel in the ground on, on April first, twenty twenty-two, then you can take your timeline and start working it backwards, you know, I gotta have this done by now and this, right now, we're just a ship, a sea just kind of bobbling around, hoping that we can find a port somewhere, you know, um, you know, the other thing, it'd be like the Greenview connection, you know, one of the dates that was thrown out for that was June first. We, we thought last fall, we was too late. We had all winter, you know, maybe we could get it done by June first. Well, it's, it's April fifth now and I don't think we can get it done by June first if we even, if we try to put everything we had into it. You know, so there needs to be dates, completion dates or at least start dates on these projects. So people have the guidelines that they need to do to make them happen. Then if they don't happen, then, then you know, we bring those people in and they've, they've got some, some, some questions to answer. Because, because things just aren't happening fast enough.
I agree.
Absolutely.
You're saying all this. We make these goals and if they take a, a year to get done, then the goals we set for next year, they usually get pushed back because these goals haven't been done. So. Yeah, I, I, I totally agree with you.
I mean, there's some certain big things that are, that are big things, you know, this downstream flood mitigation is, is a big thing. I mean, you know, and I'm not saying we, it, it, it has to happen this year if we made the goal, but there needs to be a plan in, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna start this project on this date, you know, because right now there, there's no timeline because there's, there's no start date. You, you, you can't work backwards to know when you need to do this and when you need to do that, when you need to do that. And that's just not how you run anything.
Well, I guess for the downstream widening project, that is an incredibly complicated set of circumstances, but I agree with you, Colton. And I guess what we could do is sit down with Dave and come up with a rough timeline. I, I, I don't like to hold you, some things are out of our control. The people you deal with, you just can't control sometimes. And that's been the trouble there. But you're on track, you're on the right track there. We, we could come up with a realistic timeframe, I think. To tell you the truth, I can't see it happening. Well, it could happen next summer, but things would have to start forming in place.
Only known about this for
Five years.
Four years.
Yeah.
If the Gasco families and ones holding it up, they were forewarned on this. Let's move forward with condemnation.
That's a timeline.
No, I mean, we've done the first hearing and then, so we have to go back and we need to, so we had a date certain that we, the project wants to start like Holden says. I can back it up to make sure I have, I need to have the property acquired by the time we set, set the bids out. So I can back the dates up. So and I understand Holden wants to go through that process, but he also wanted to do the project is, you know, and we have worked with them.
It's not the Gasco's basement that's gonna get flooded.
Yeah. So, um, we've already done that first process. It would probably take, I would say, four to six months to go through all the processes. So if you tell me we want to put in the ground April first next year, I can back that up and, and, uh, make sure we're on track this year to get the acquisition completed. And sometimes if you go all the way down the pipe, before you get to the commission hearing, that thing settles. So.
Gordon, you have something you want to say?
I just wanted to remind people that sometimes the finances are more difficult to come up with than, than we would like them to be.
Okay, but I agree with you, but then I also agree with you that, I mean, again, having a schedule, knowing this is when we want to do this, that helps the finance guy plan too, then.
I guess you just have to look because it's hard to tell what, what, what might happen in the next year. At any rate, the finances are, are critical sometimes.
I understand that.
Yeah, and just, just to add to, to that, um, Colton, in, I've probably gotten a little, um, lackadaisical on, uh, keeping our staff work plan updated. So, um, I will re, revigorate that. And, and the way the staff work plan is every quarter, we, we. And, and the way the staff work plan is every quarter, we, we plan out what is going to be done and things have gotten, uh, really out of whack with COVID, then it just hadn't been, uh, something that we've talked about recently in our staff meetings, so I will certainly get that back up. And, um, and we usually put that on the website, so at least, at least quarterly, there's a review on where we are and if there are things, that pop up, like any of the things that were mentioned, at least we can say, hey, we, we, we're not moving forward with eminent domain at this point, we're giving, one more go at, at, at trying to have another set of meetings with Gaskills. And those kinda things could be, you know, lamented and, and you can go back and look at it. And we hadn't, we haven't been as diligent as, as getting those things updated, so I'll, I'll make sure we get those things going in addition to any other timelines that council wanted set. So at least we, we can have those points to revisit those issues if they come up and hold up a project.
Well, related also is, when we had the last capital improvements plan, it was an actual plan which was adopted by resolutions. Leslie told me that today, I'm pretty sure. So maybe for our other capital improvement projects, we didn't,
We did my resolution this week, uh, this, this year, for, uh, in February. So we have a resolution for our capital improvement plan.
Okay. Alright.
But we just started that, Roger, so yeah, that's probably why you haven't seen anything. We just, we just did that, I think, last month.
Okay.
Well, East Collin Street, we were supposed to do last year, but COVID stopped that, so, and we had the funding for it. So, when are we doing it now?
That was planned for this budget year, the one we're currently in.
Okay, so what are we doing it?
It's still supposed to be done this spring. I talked to Larry about it a couple weeks ago. And he's, he said that they would have time to get, get the storm sewer put in and the, water main. I don't have a solid date on when that's gonna be. Um, V and K was making some changes. Oh, based off of, we have to change some elevations in that road. So the plans that we, that they had drawn up, they're changing a few elevations on it and then, we have to get that all back together and then get that to Lynch's so that, that can happen.
Easement agreement signed with myself and, uh, Lenox across the street, some easement agreements and or, right-of-way agreements, or maybe even a purchase agreement of some of their property. Fifteen or twenty-eight feet. Which, uh, he's.
This was supposed to happen last year, why, why isn't that stuff already taken through?
It got complicated. No one knows if it's a right-of-way or a, uh,
Well, when did it happen last year, in other words?
But right-of-way, it's been some ambiguity of whether it's a sixty-foot right-of-way or a thirty-foot right-of-way with an sewer easement. And, um, the, the utility company will do one thing for free if it's a right-of-way and they won't do it for free if it's not. I'm not sure what all those ramifications are, but that's kinda the issue that's going on.
And there was a little evolution as well, because I think when we first start saying connection, it was a very basic connection. Wasn't even a real road connection as much as it was a path connection. And then we, we thought about having a road go straight through. Uh, so we spent some time, um, looking at that, getting ca, uh, engineering estimates on that. And then we, we kind of fell back to having the road, but not taking it all the way through the cul-de-sac and just connecting. So there, there, there are evolutions that happened, um, even though the connection.
Evolution, but there's no revolution. Nothing's getting done. We've, we've been, we've been sitting there knowing the fire whistle needs to be moved for a year. And still, there it sits. So what are, what are the plans for construction?
I'm not sure. I, I don't know yet.
And that's where the problem lies.
Yeah. Okay, we'll talk about it some more. We'll, we'll get together with some people.
Alright. Any more discussion on this? Alrighty.
I was, I, I was laying some dates. In a month. Where are these projects?
We'll work on that.
Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I've got another item to discuss if we're, uh, through with that. I, I could give you a quick rundown on where the widening is. That's in Gaskill's court. They have a drawing that shows the needed area as well as the impacts to the C R P. We've been working with N R C S on the C R E, C R P impacts. That's all been delineated for them and they're working to talk amongst the family to find out if they're in agreement with that. It's been complicated in that the, um, park side development is, wrapped into this just because of proximity and we're trying to separate the two since one is a private development, the other is a cities. But we're trying to continue to work with the property owner and provide the information they're looking for. So currently, we're just waiting for them to give us some feedback and I'll push on that this week. And as Roger mentioned on the Greenview extension, that I believe, uh, we're looking into the, right-of-way issue, whether that's a easement and who owns that, if it was ever dedicated, when that was, um, transferred over to the city through the annexation. And Kevin, I don't know if you were able to find anything on that, but that's.
I talked to the county about it before I went on vacation, so I'll fill you in when, I'll, I'll fill you in then. The Otter's office.
Okay, aside from those.
Electrical, a line had to move some.
So here's the issue with the electrical. If it's in a right-of-way, then by law, a line has to move it at their cost. If it's an easement, then the city has to pay the cost. So what we're trying to do is get a determination, that it's a right-of-way and then they don't pay the cost, they pay the cost. They've claimed it's an easement, because in nineteen sixty, the flat showed, the flat was the goofiest thing, you know, it showed like a thirty-foot. It shows, it shows, right now on the county's website, it shows a right-of-way that's not owned by anybody. And the county said, well, I, we think that's an easement. I said, well, how can it be an easement if you're not taxing it, because if it's an easement, somebody owns the underlying, it should be taxed. Well, they don't have a tax on anybody either, so that's what I'm trying to work through with them, because that, that can make a lot of, any, that can make a lot of, uh, dollars on the project, depending on what the ultimate, uh, if we determine it's a right-of-way, we'll just give them notice to say, you got, you gotta get it out of here and you're required to. So that's the, that's the issue here, where is a nineteen sixties flat that, and it was before the annex, so, and I had talked to the county about it before I went on vacation too, so we're.
If it's an easement and they're doing it, that can take years.
Well, the, the problem with utility companies, even if they're required to move it, doesn't exactly mean they're going to move it real fast. Yeah, I agree with you on that. I've had plenty of experience with that. Uh, David, do you have a cost, they said it wouldn't be to move it?
I don't have it available, Kevin, but I could provide that in any mail.
So we're trying to.
I'm just, the only reason I ask, is if it's not that big of a sum of money.
Oh, it would be a big sum.
I kinda figured, but I still, it's still a question. I mean, if it's not, if it's not an astronomical cost, is it worth? Yeah, that's kinda what I'm getting at. I don't think it's going to be, but that's just kinda my question. I mean, if it's not an astronomical cost, is it worth going back and forth, or do we just say, hey, screw it, we'll just pay for it, move it?
Yeah, I've, I've gone on that fence, on that thought myself, Nick. If, you know, if it's under twenty-five thousand, why don't we just do it and get it, pay it and get it done? We can finish this project. Anything more than that, which I don't know, fifteen, twenty thousand, we might, we might save that money. If we could.
Do we have a location on the, the siren yet? Where it's gonna go?
We're looking at keeping it in roughly the same area, just moving it behind the curb far enough that it doesn't have an impact. We need to make sure that we're clear of the grading though, and that really depends on what we can acquire for property for easement. So we, we need to talk with the adjacent property owner, get an agreement in place for the property purchase, or if we're going to do it as an easement, uh, which impacts setback on the lot. So there's a few things there we're trying to work through as well.
I'm not fighting anything. I'm cooperating.
Hey, I can go in Roger's backyard.
Yeah.
So, uh, if, if we're through with those, the item I wanted to talk about, Colton, was the, uh, the roundabout. If we could talk through that as part of this item as well, that's come up here late last week. So the, the issue that we're dealing with on that is the preliminary estimate was about two hundred seventy-eight thousand or so. And currently, they're closer to four fifty. And we've worked with them quite a bit to try to get that shoved back to the west and keep the existing roadway on the east side of the intersection closer to the grade. Um, that hasn't, uh, been able to, uh, really resolve itself much to reduce the cost. And then today I received a call from Neil at the county. Uh, they had some preliminary discussion with the board and the board liaison indicated that the county was not interested in, allowing us to have a multi-year payback. So the combination of those two items creates a significant issue. And, uh, trying to afford that project for the city. So we need to have some discussion about whether we go back to the option of just putting it in, uh, let the county do their project and not impact the city and we come back and reevaluate when we take a look at Cedar Johnson Road.
Dave, part, I haven't seen the, the plan. But is part of, part of that additional cost, because they're dropping the road so far down, that they're gonna have to go on to Cedar Johnson Road to the north farther than, than expected? That part of the cost?
That's part of it. However, if we were able to drop the road to where we didn't have to have the slope so steep on the east side of the intersection, they, they initially added it about eight percent, whereas the existing road's about five percent. So you could see that, that slope would increase pretty drastically for about two hundred fifty to three hundred feet. That didn't seem appropriate. If, if they would cut it down as part of the initial plan, that we discussed back in two thousand fourteen when we did the study, which I thought was included in the initial estimate, uh, we wouldn't have that issue. They were indicating that it also has impacts north and south. South is a level B maintenance road. That would stop concrete at the end of the return and we could transition that with a little bit of an asphalt taper and some gravel. That's pretty inexpensive. The north part, if we're going to redo anyhow, it's just a matter of whether we pay that cost now or we do Cedar Johnson Road. But it would be sort of a neutral cost to the city. We're just doing it sooner rather than later. The east part is where there's about three hundred feet of extra pavement and a lot of grading in order to get that, that built up. And it doesn't make sense to increase the slope on that and do the extra paving. So when we try to take that back down, it has an impact on the west side, which the county's paying for, and I think that's where the resistance is. Uh, we haven't been able to get past that, and even if we were, it doesn't lower it back down to that initial cost estimate. And even at the initial cost estimate with the discussion today, having to pay it all in next year's budget is a problem. I didn't get any, get an answer from Neil. He just indicated that the liaison to the board indicated that the board was happy with their budget and they didn't want to adjust, um, to try to have to make payments or make the full payment and only receive part of that reimbursement this year. I didn't catch that, Kevin.
Who's the liaison they're dealing with?
I'll have to get that from Neil. He didn't give me a name. He just referenced the title.
Well, this is, I mean, to me, this is, they just reneged on their whole. I mean, once again, it's just, you know, there's not much of West Range and Johnson County, so they.
I am.
I am, but I mean, but it's, it's, uh, to me, that's just, you know, they're getting nine million dollars or more than that from the feds in their next thing, so it's not like they're, uh, rolling it. So, well, if you find a liaison, I'd like to, I could email them and figure out what the heck they're thinking behind that is, because, as you said, there's other cities that have done this in the past and why are they changing their mind now? Especially after we spent how many months going off with this.
So if we went, if we did away with the turn, roundabout and did a straight with turn lane.
The turn lane would still have a city cost share, and if they're not willing to let us pay for that in multiple years, we're still looking at roughly, two hundred seventy to three hundred thousand, if I remember from the initial estimates, and that's again, based off the initial. And we'd likely have to do some earthwork and, and whatnot for that too, so I'm sure that estimate's gone up since they initially provided that.
What was the free option? Is there still a free option?
The free option was to bring the road in at the same elevation as it is now and tie into the intersection on the center line.
Are they willing to slow traffic down back to the west?
I can ask that question and see what the development that we have occurring, if we could transition that back further.
Would they be willing to slow the traffic down, being this in Johnson County? We don't have control of that. Can they slow the traffic down?
I'm, I'm sure they could, uh, we could ask for speed limits, you know, from fifty-five or to forty-five to thirty-five. They wouldn't do that. Huh, that's all discouraging.
Yeah, it is. I, I think one of the biggest things was the line of sight and that, the grade not changing. That's still, I mean, it makes it better if it's slower traffic, but it's still a danger.
Dave, is there any way we can meet with Neil, you and Neil and a couple council people this week? I won't be able to be there, but we need to sit down and talk with Neil and, maybe get one of their supervisors, maybe get their supervisor liaison there also.
Right, yeah, I, I think we'd probably get better information if we could get somebody from the board of supervisors to sit in.
I mean, you're being the middle man and I, I just feel like we need more information. We need to know from them what's going on. The sooner we meet, the better. scheduled meeting then, this week?
Yes, I'll, I'll work with Neil to get that done and then, um, I had forwarded you the, uh, email back and forth between Neil and myself, through efforts trying to get this resolved and you can.
Yeah. I forwarded that to all the council people, so they're,
Okay.
They, they know what's out there. So they're, they're informed of some of that. So, uh, we need to meet. I wanna meet with them.
Okay, I'll see what I can get worked out.
Be able to. Anytime after Saturday, I can probably meet.
I, I also think it's a, a good thing for, um, Kevin to follow up on the liaison, because sometimes this gets tied up with, with the bureaucrats and the policymakers may not even know. So.
Well, the, it sounds like they're on a timeline, Roger.
I know, they are. We're, we're killing it. They're killing it. I don't know how this happened. We, they had a plan and now it's completely changed and I don't quite understand why. I don't like taking nine feet out of there, however much they're taking. I don't like that. Kevin Stulman's driveway is gonna be absolutely terrible. I don't like that.
Sixty feet of yard.
Yeah.
Anyhow, I wasn't in favor of the roundabout to begin with, I am, now I'm really not.
Well, I'm still in favor of it, but if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and you know, the free option looks pretty good right now. No worse than what we have now.
Yeah. No better either.
Well, it should be better, because the, the grade will get cut down slightly. Well, it should be better because the, the grade will get cut down slightly. And the curb will get straightened out slightly.
There's work to be done on Cedar Johnson Road and, and Johnson County will pay for half of their side and.
I know.
That's for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
None of that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to tap into some of that.
There's an agreement in place from the seventies, I believe, where it indicates that as a result of the county doing a project at that point, the council for the city at that time had agreed to take on any future maintenance costs. Or reconstruction cost, I can provide, I can.
A future council can, a, a council cannot agree to hold a future council to something.
So that.
That's rule number one and.
I, I'll provide the documents, uh, so that you have it available and then, uh, we can, we can take that course and, and see where we go.
All right, yeah, it's just starting to turn into more of an adversario. Negotiation than, than initial, the way it initially started, so that's, that's a little disappointing.
Right.
Well, we need to get bodies at a table and talk it out, it's all we gotta do, that might help. Yeah.
Anything else on this subject?
No.
We're moving to reports, city administrator report.
I don't have a report, uh, this evening, but I did want to update everyone, I, I don't know, I'm hoping everyone's been briefed, um. I'm in isolation, um, uh, today, I, I did get a, a test done, I'm told it should know in a couple of days, so. I will, um, um, minimize my time in the office until I, I find out, I'm hoping that it will be a negative, uh. But it just so happens that, uh, what I thought I was fighting was sinuses and, uh, typical code and maybe there's more to it, so. I will find out soon, um, but.
That's how I started, Redmond, that's, that's exactly how I started. But I came in, I came in and talked to you, but. On, on Thursday, so.
Yeah, it, it does match up on timeline, that's.
I know.
concerning, but, but, uh, I'll, I'll probably come in, 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 in the evening and, and keep my, my exposure real short to staff if I have to drop in the office or anything and. I certainly will be masked up, so hopefully I'll know something soon.
I would try to avoid coming here altogether. That would be my, that's. You're getting permission from us, don't come to work, man, if you can't do it at home.
Yeah, we, we had the beef of our remote, working from home, um, we, we struggled with that a little bit, but, um, certainly going to, to miss it, but well. We will work through it.
All right. City attorney report, nothing. Staff hearsay. Half, nothing. Comments from the mayor, city council members. Nothing. Motion to adjourn. Nick, second Jody, all say aye?
I get the motion to adjourn with you over there, Matt.